I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities.
All right, good evening, everyone. I recall this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Of course, as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is a privilege for us to be here. The agenda's been circulated and updated with the, all right, refresh my screen, with the land purchase addition on there. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Frasier, all those in favor? Suppose, motion is carried. Thank you. And apologize for starting a little bit late. We had back-to-back meetings, so appreciate everyone's patience. And we'll move on to introduction of new, I'm gonna say new, not totally new, new staff. So we'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development to introduce Megan and Ryan.
Good evening. Yes, Megan has started with us in the beginning of May, but had not had a formal introduction here in council chambers. So first, I want to introduce Megan Doucette. She's a Planner One with the Energize Bridgewater Project. Megan, as I said, started with us in May, and the work that she's doing with us is focused on the planning, stakeholder engagement, communications for the Energize Bridgewater. She has a Bachelor of Management with a major in Environment Sustainability and Society from Dalhousie University, and a Masters of Urban Planning from the Gilead University. Past work experience for Megan, she was an active transportation planner with Bicycle Nova Scotia, the Executive Director of the Halifax Cycling Coalition, and Office Manager at Shelter Nova Scotia. But she also had summer experience here, so she's probably a familiar face for many of you around the council table, as she worked for the town of Bridgewater, the planning department, and the recreation department, organizing the Growing Green Festival, and launching the inaugural musical on Riverbank Concert Series. So it was really great to be able to welcome Megan back to the town. She's really passionate about contributing to more equitable and environmentally sustainable communities, and she came back to the South Shore. She is from the South Shore, not right around Bridgewater. Yeah, we're really, really thrilled to have Megan as part of the team. Megan, if you want to come say anything, you're welcome to. It has become a standard.
Long speeches, every time.
Hello. Yeah, I don't have too much else to add from Jessica, but I am excited to be here. I was really drawn to coming back to work with the town of Bridgewater based on the progressive work that's happening with the Energize Bridgewater Project, and particularly the focus on supporting people who are experiencing energy poverty and having the opportunity to work on affordable housing and affordable transportation. And yeah, really wanting to support people who are in the greatest need. So I was looking forward to the opportunity to kind of work towards that with this team.
Welcome.
So I have a second introduction, and this one is a bit more unusual, because Ryan is not staff, but I wanted to introduce Ryan McMillan. He's the Project Manager at Efficiency One for the Energize Bridgewater contract that we have with them. So he was hired specifically to implement our contract. And because he's not staff, but he's going to be the face of Efficiency One that you'll see here, working on Energize Bridgewater on the retrofit component, I thought it was important that you know who he is, so that when members of the community are approaching you with, "What is this all about?", you know exactly who he is. So Ryan is a Registered Energy Advisor with Natural Resources Canada. That's the certification body for energy, for the energy body, his energy efficiency body. He has deep experience with energy efficiency programs, assessments, and modeling. He's actually assessed over 200 homes here in Bridgewater when he was working with the delivery organization of the home warming program. And he was also formerly a program manager with a delivery organization for the Mi'kmaq Home Energy Efficiency Project. He has really strong knowledge of building science. He's a carpenter and a building, sorry, a home inspector, not a building inspector. And he loves the South Shore, but he actually lives on the Eastern Shore. He's based out of the Efficiency One office in Dartmouth, but has, actually, he has town privileges and is working really, really closely with the Energize team, kind of, not quite to the same degree that Miles, as our energy manager was, but getting close to there. So, if you'd like to say anything, welcome you down here, too.
Hello. Nice to meet everyone. As Jessica said, I'm Ryan McMillan with Efficiency Nova Scotia. I have many years of experience working with different programs through Efficiency Nova Scotia Delivery Programs, such as the Mi'kmaq Home Energy Efficiency Program. And as Jessica touched on, I've been in close contact with Bridgewater over the last five years doing energy evaluations. I've done over 200 homes in the community alone for the home warming program. If you're not familiar with that program, it's also an income-based program, so it deals with people that are experiencing energy poverty day to day. So I'm really excited to be part of this program and help as many people as we can in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Jessica, for introduction of your team. And any announcements from members of council? Council Frasier?
Yes, I'd just like to let people know that the parade application is now available for those that are, have been asking, that would like to put a float in the parade. So the application is online. If you go to the Town of Bridgewater site for Christmas on Lulah Ave, the details are there as to, and the parade will be happening on Saturday, November 26th, so mark it on your calendar.
Perfect. I know everyone's excited to have this return, so that's exciting. Any other announcements from members of council? Just quickly, I had the pleasure of bringing greetings on behalf of the town at the Dewali Festival on Saturday. It was packed at the Michelin Social Club, which is just incredible to see. Lots of familiar faces, but lots of new faces, literally from all around the world now settling in Bridgewater. I didn't count every person. I would say they had over 300 people at that event. Lots of music, lots of dancing, lots of education, lots of food, so that was fantastic. The other announcement I want to make is that the Lunenburg County Sport Heritage Society has its induction night for the Wall of Fame. That is this Sunday at 6:00 PM at the LCLC. Tickets are $25 at the door, or you can get them in advance, so you can look for that. And if there's no further announcements... Oh, yes, this is our last, this is our last meeting before Remembrance Day? It is our last meeting before Remembrance Day, because next week is the 5th Monday. So, you know what, I'm gonna look to Council Thorburn. Do you just want to, I mean, it's, we're back to regular capacity and all that, are we?
Situation normal.
Fantastic.
We will have a parade, we'll have a great ceremony at the Senatour, and there'll be a small reception when we get back to the hall. But there'll be no big sit-down yet like we had in the evening, so it should wrap up probably around 2-ish, 1:30, 2:00 tomorrow. So, and we're really all excited for that program to get up and running this year.
Yeah, I know that it's such an important event for members of the community, always a great turnout in the last couple of years. I know it's been heartbreaking, really, to not be able to have the full community turnout for that event, so it's great that we're back to, as you said, situation normal.
Yeah, no, it's great. And, you know, the average age of our veterans is up in the high 90s now, and we're losing them daily. So there's not too many more November 11th, and there won't be any survivors for World War II. And Korea was right behind them, and veterans are aging up there as well. So please get out and support your branch, your legion.
For those who can't attend, the town will be live streaming on Facebook, so it will be, I'm assuming CKBW is broadcasting as well, like they normally do?
Yes, both radio stations.
Yeah, perfect. But if you can't be there in person, it is being livestreamed by the towns. Thank you. Moving along, we have a delegation. So we have Ms. Carol Cote as a, wants to address council, so I'd ask you to come down to the podium, please. And so we have, we have 10 minutes for pre-announced delegations, so there's a clock to your right, but that doesn't include any questions that council may have, so that's, you can deal with those after.
Is that 10 minutes firm? Because I practiced all afternoon, and I did prepare a 30-page document, which was provided to Sandra electronically.
Yep.
And I do have a few paper copies here, but I ran out of ink. I did my best to condense it as much as possible, but what happens? Do you cut me off in the middle of a sentence when the bell buzzer goes?
Well, if it's like 11 or 12 minutes, then if it's, if you think it's going to be that, then we can let that go.
I'll go as fast as I can possibly. I understand that I can't review all the content.
And we do have a copy.
I've basically made a little summary of everything, but I would like to actually speak out loud to some of these things.
Yep, and council does have a copy of the presentation?
I don't know that it's been submitted to you as yet, because I was at it until the very last minute, but I do have some paper copies here, if anybody would like to...
Yeah, we've received, we have, we have received it.
First, let me say that 30 minutes ago, I had a suit on. I was all prepared, in heels and a black dress suit that I pulled out the back of my closet from when I used to be a businesswoman. And I realized that doing that defeated part of the purpose in me being here, because I should not have to wear a suit to be heard, or to be seen, or to be respected. So I decided to put my own clothes back on, to put my moccasins back on my feet, and come as exactly who I am. So I come before you today as a taxpaying citizen of the town, a citizen who often feels disrespected and ignored, who feels that being of lower economic status somehow makes me less worthy and less deserving of services in the town. Services that even my meager tax dollars contribute to, which are up to date, by the way. Admittedly, I live a humble life in a 576-square-foot home that most of you would likely be able to fit at least two of in your own homes. But as a working single parent, I am proud to say that I rebuilt it from the studs over a period of 10 years. And although it is humble, it is my home, and it may not be as big or as pretty as others, but is no less worthy of respect, nor am I. I had big plans for that little house on the lane, but a 2015 diagnosis of neurological disease and spinal degeneration put an end to those dreams, and I put all my efforts instead into preparing accommodations for my progressive illness and hopefully my aging. I planned to live out my remaining years on the lane. However, in the last decade, my taxes have increased by 37.98%, 22.9% of that in the last five years alone. It's understandable, as the cost of living goes up every year, and in the last few years exponentially. What I didn't expect was the continued downgrading and degradation of services provided by the town itself, and my apologies, but the genuine lack of concern or interest on the part of the mayor. Bridgewater has several significant issues that negatively impact the well-being of the population, more so in certain areas, but everyone should have equal access and equal rights regardless of their socioeconomic status or what side of town they live on. To make decisions based on either of those factors is discriminatory. So let's talk about as quickly as possible the basic issues of concern in my document. The first being air quality. Three years ago, I approached the mayor because I had concerns about the quality of the air. I live in proximity to Michelin, to Dexter's, on a little street called Frank's Lane, very close to Logan Road Extension, and Logan Road. Unfortunately, that means that my white clothes have gray and black particulate on them when I hang them out on a sunny day. And when I bring them in, hoping to have beautiful smelling laundry, we all like the smell of fresh sheets, mine don't smell fresh. That's a big concern for me. The mayor was able to determine that the air quality monitoring system for this area was defunct. It broke, and they removed it instead of repairing it. Nobody seems to know why. Provincially, federally, municipally, nobody seems to have any concern for the quality of the air that we're breathing, and I'm disturbed by this. I'm disturbed because it's a potential health risk to all citizens. Also, given the incredible commitment to a greener planet and to, you know, clean energy, I believe that monitoring the air is a critical tool to measure those achievements. So I have arranged for private monitoring at my own property, and it will run through to June of 2023. At that time, it will be collated and evaluated, and a summary will be made, and if anybody's interested in that data, I can make it available to you. Holy crap. Sidewalks. The sidewalk from St. Philip Street to Victoria Road, from Victoria Road down to York Street is almost impassable. You'll see in document, in your document, that there's pictures, but these pictures were all submitted two years ago. This road has been this way for more than a decade. I've been there 15 years. I can't go for a walk anymore, anymore, because any distance, I have to use a mobility aid, a walker. My wheels get fetched up in the crevices, and in the holes, and the cracks, and I quite simply can't go anywhere. I'm watching now the young children going along and tripping and falling over them, so it is becoming a hazard for able-bodied people, too. And the mayor assured me, when I brought this issue to him, that, you know, the problem was that the resources needed to be focused on the more populated areas of town. I understand that. I understand that there's other areas that are more populated, but at the end of the day, you can't just ignore our area on the other side of the tracks or on the other side of the town, because, not for decades, you know, we do pay our taxes, too, and they may be a little more humble, but I think we also have a right to have a sidewalk that we can all walk. I realize that my comments may be a little inflammatory, and they may be a little edged with frustration, but some of these issues I've been bringing forth for years now, so I may be a little bit emotional. Pavement and plowing and snow removal. So, a few years ago, they started to do some work on Frank's Lane, and they told us that it was in preparation for, to resurface the road. We all got excited, because we thought we were getting good pavement, and that was a very exciting thing for us. But we didn't get pavement, we got sand seal. And as a result of that, for the last two or three winters, it has gotten progressively worse, and you will see the pictures in your, in your report. The road has no place to drain, there are craters, and the water just sits. And because they can't remove it, it sits there all winter, and it freezes, and it thaws, and it freezes, and it thaws, and we end up with ruts, this deep. And some people back the road have small cars, and it's impossible for them to get back the road. That's just one piece of the equation. I have been assured that nothing has changed, that everything has remained the same in terms of the policies and the level of services that are provided. But we have gone, in the last couple of years, as long as 20 hours without being plowed out. I chose to stay in town and to renovate that house and live here, because accessibility to emergency services was important to me. To be in town where things were taken care of, and I could easily get out anytime. Now I have people who live in the country getting out and going to work before some of the people on my street can, and we live in town. It doesn't seem fair, and it doesn't seem right. And I know that they say nothing's changed, but I've been there 15 years. The fellow at the end of the lane- The fellow at the end of the lane has been there all his life. There's a lady back the road who's been there for the best part of fifty years. We all unequivocally agree that things have changed, and in the last three years, they have changed exponentially, to the point where we're actually stranded, sometimes for sixteen, twenty hours after the storm ends. And I don't understand how that's possible. Is it again because we're on the wrong side of town? To take it a step further, the new plow driver hit my fence this year through the winter because they decided to push snow somewhere where they had never pushed it before. They broke off three of the panels, and they broke some of the boards. So that's twenty-four feet of fence that was impacted. When I contacted the town, I was told that they would have to do an investigation in the spring to determine whether or not the fence was on the town right-of-way. Well, it wasn't on the right-of-way when it was put in under renovation building permit that Andy Wensel authorized and inspected when he closed it. It wasn't in the town right-of-way when Graham Hopkins inspected it two years ago when I put a little swimming pool in. But suddenly, when the plow driver hits it, we have to wait and investigate to determine whether or not it's in the right-of-way of the town. I couldn't wait that long, so I had a contractor come in and move the fence back six or seven feet. I have a dog, the fence needs to be, the yard needs to be fenced in for my service dog, so I got it taken care of. What that did do, however, is it fully exposed the maple tree that is, once upon a time, the fence was up against. So I called the town and asked them to take the maple tree down, because this is the last remaining obstacle that would force the plow driver to navigate and push snow against the fence. Three, four days ago, I heard power saws running outside, and I went outside on my doorstep excited because I thought they were taking down the maple tree, and they were trimming the lilac bush across the street. So I took my cellphone and I snapped a picture, and when I did, the young man said to the other, "Oh, look, we must be cutting the wrong effin' thing." This is a town employee. I didn't speak, all I did was take a look around. And the maple was still there, and nobody has ever gotten back to me, which is the next item, which is follow-through and communication. This maple tree is a prime example. Oftentimes, we make a request to the town, or we ask a question, or we ask for a service, and we hear nothing back for weeks, for months, sometimes even years. It does not, sorry, would you like me to stop now?
If you're close to being completed, we'll let you, you can keep going for a bit.
There's only one other real, the rest you can read, energy, poverty, all that stuff. The only other issue I'd really like to talk to you about is policing, if I could. So just follow-through and communication, it would be really helpful if, when someone approaches the town about a tree, for example, if somebody could come back to them and say, "Well, we looked at the tree and we're going to leave it there," or "We didn't look at the tree yet," or something, so that when weeks and weeks go by, you don't know if somebody forgot, or if anybody got the message, or they just didn't, or, you know, if you should call again or not call again. The next issue on the agenda is community policing, community safety, and communication. Eight years ago, a drug dealer bought a home on the lane. And although it began very slowly, the vehicular and pedestrian traffic increased dramatically. Within two years, we were invaded by pill poppers, crack, and meth addicts wandering the streets, appearing magically in our backyard, and invading our space at all hours of the day and night. Two years ago, the house across from me was sold to a Dartmouth developer who rented it without renovation to the first people he could find, just happened to be customers of said drug dealer who arrived with multiple pit balls, who ran free, wreaking havoc throughout the neighborhood, havoc of their own. With drugs also comes conflict. We lived like this for seven years, violence in the street, fighting, screaming, yelling, never-ending traffic, and the police, always the police. The lane was blocked off numerous times by as many as a dozen police cars without warning and without any communication. I'm sure the police did their best, but it seems that every time they arrested somebody, within days, the culprit was back. Even the drug traffickers given ankle bracelets and sent home on house arrest. Sadly, many drug dealers work from home. I would wager that a sizable percentage of the millions spent on policing is allocated to arresting the same core group of people repeatedly. This has to stop. Our communities need to feel safe again. Changes to the criminal code have to be made to allow police to be effective in their work. Changes to the, whoops, towns, municipalities, and cities need to lobby our government and request the necessary changes to eliminate this colossal waste of time and resources. It is irresponsible and unethical to continue to promote Bridgewater as a beautiful place to live and ignore the dark underbelly of the drug trade and all that it entails, including the risks that it poses to the population. Being blind to the magnitude of the problem and taking no action as a community has only allowed it to grow. Now, there's a bunch of other topics. I would appreciate it immensely if you could all take the time at some point in your schedules to read it in its entirety, and if any of you have any questions, or you would like more clarification, photographs, any kind of documentation, I have lots. And I really do appreciate you giving me time to speak. I did not mean to be offensive or anything like that. I just really felt that I needed to speak my piece, and I hope you will take it in the spirit with which it was intended. I love this town, and I only want to make it better for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Cote. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Appreciate always when people come before council. I know it's never easy to come stand before a couple of cameras and a microphone, so thank you again for sharing your concerns, and those have been passed to council. And council can, yes, Councilor?
Just wondering what, there's a lot of issues raised here. What happens with going forward? Does somehow staff follows up with council?
Yeah, so normally when we have a delegation with documents, supporting documents, and those will be passed to staff, and usually it comes back to a council meeting for discussion. Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we are down to election of the deputy mayor, which means we must be at the halfway mark of this council term. So before you, you have your nomination ballot. We do this twice, right? So we do a nomination to get who is putting their name forward for deputy mayor, and then we will, Sandra will hand out another color, right? Is it yellow this time?
I think it's orange.
It doesn't matter, I'm just being difficult. And then you'll vote on. So the first one is for nominations for putting your name or someone's name forward. Okay? Sandra will collect them all.
So just choose one if you wish, it's not required?
Okay. I should add that our CAO is absent today, so our Director of Finance is here, and she will also be scrutineering the balance. Yeah, yep.
Use my audit experience.
Yes, we brought in an auditor just for this.
Just like the identity awards.
Yeah. Well, I hope not.
Well, okay, yeah, good point.
I don't want to do that, it's very difficult. Okay, so this, whoever becomes deputy mayor, they actually, that takes effect November first. So even I forgot that. So normally, we do at the beginning of the council term, it takes effect immediately because we don't have a deputy mayor at all. So deputy mayor's term ends on the thirty-first, and the new one would begin on the first. So just a little bit of clarification there. So one way or another, Deputy Mayor Tanner, you are stuck being Deputy Mayor Tanner for this meeting.
While she's counting the votes, I'd just like to thank Andrew for the excellent job he's done as deputy mayor. Did work with him occasionally, but he's done us all proud, Andrew, and thank you very much for volunteering for deputy mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I certainly appreciate, you and I have talked many, 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 many times. I think I said to council, there's some, it's sometimes daily, and it's sometimes poor Andrew having to just listen to me let off a little bit of steam during a tough day. He did that with grace and class.
So we have four nominees. So I'd just like to check and see if you're willing to accept the nominations. Cheryl Fugier?
Yes, I will.
Stacy Colwell?
I'm flattered, but I will decline.
Thank you.
Andrew Tanner?
I will decline.
Thank you. And Jennifer McDonald?
I will decline as well.
Okay. Then by acclamation, congratulations to Cheryl Fugier. That is for a term beginning November first.
Yeah, congratulations. Now I have to decide if I need to move Cheryl over there the next meeting, just because my head tends to go that way.
I could use a change of scene. I'm sure he'll still ask a lot of questions, though. Good questions.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure you didn't take it personally when you declined, and Sandra was like, "Thank you." "Thank you, we're declining." I'm just kidding. No, again, thank you, Andrew, for your six years as deputy mayor and...
Really?
Yep. And clearly, it just went by so quickly. It was so memorable. Now, your hard work has been so appreciated and filling in for me and various things, so thank you so much. Yeah, congratulations to Council Fugier, who had our next meeting, we'll be Deputy Mayor Fugier. We have the minutes of October eleventh, regular council meeting, any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes circulated, Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Councilor Colwell, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to planning items, seven twenty-six La Havre Street, application briefing for land use bylaw zoning map amendment.
Yes, so as you saw from the application briefing that you received, we've received an application to rezone the lands at seven twenty-six La Havre Street to high-density residential, which is the same designation that it has on the future land use map. Do you have any questions about this? It's just the beginning of the process, there will be a public meeting on November second.
In council chambers?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. Any questions, Councilor Colwell?
Just about flood risk mitigation, would that be part of the process?
This is not within the La Havre River Development Agreement area, so it's on the non-river, it's across the street from the bank of the river. However, that does form part of the assessment and valuation, but it's not required to have the same level of development agreement.
But it would be a consideration as part of the process?
Through the process, we'll be taking a look, but our Development Agreement area doesn't apply until it gets off.
Good question. Any other questions? So as you said, the process begins November second, a public meeting. Any other comments on this one? Boy, you're setting the bar pretty high for quick presentations.
I thought that somebody else did that last week, I thought Mike did.
Yeah, actually, his was quick, too. Okay, we're down to reports and recommendations. We have RFP twenty twenty-two dash ten, Engineering Services, Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks and UV System Upgrades.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'm here to talk about RFP twenty twenty-two dash ten, Engineering Services, Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks and UV System Upgrades. As part of the twenty twenty-two twenty-three capital budget, Town Council approved two design projects for the wastewater treatment plant, replacement of bar screen and gritter, otherwise known as wastewater treatment plant headworks, and UV upgrades. Both of these systems are in failing condition and require the design of a full replacement for the headworks, while the disinfection UV system will design redundancy along with energy-efficient upgrades. Since both design contracts will be completed at the wastewater treatment plant, staff issued them together in August twenty twenty-two under the RFP twenty twenty-two dash ten. On September seventh, twenty twenty-two, the town received three requests for proposals to supply engineering services for this project. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars was budgeted for the UV upgrade design, and forty thousand budgeted for the design of the headworks upgrades, for a total of a hundred and sixty thousand net HST. All proposals qualified, and the low bid pricing was very close to the estimate we had been provided, while the other two prices varied significantly from that estimate. It is recommended to award to the consultant with the highest overall evaluation rating, CBCL Limited, with an estimated cost of a hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents, HST included, which is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents net HST. We're recommending this company because of their complete proposal, extensive wastewater treatment plant experience, and continuous design work on our specific wastewater treatment plant. This estimated cost includes the full mandatory design pricing, items one to six, which will ensure the completion of the full design of both components. Proposals came in slightly over the twenty twenty-three budget, so in order to award this, we will require additional funds of three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents net HST from wastewater reserves. We're also asking that we would provide continuity between the design and construction. We're recommending to award provisional construction inspection services to the design consultant as part of this work. This work will occur in future years, potentially twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, so the award recommendation will be based on future budget approval, but we'll provide it now for the continuity. Construction services, provisional items seven and eight, have an estimated cost of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents, HST included, or thirty-three thousand and seventy-seven dollars and forty-three cents net HST. Are there any questions?
Questions from council?
Does anyone want to clarify that we're awarding contract without the funding in place, it's contingent on next year's budget, so if that money wasn't available, what happens to that contract?
So we're just looking to award the construction inspection services, which is another phase of the project, so if we don't get budgeting, we'll ask the consultant to forward it to whenever we do actually go forward with the construction. It's a provisional item, so we don't have to award.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Want a motion? Sure.
I would move that Town Council, the town of Bridgewater, endorse the recommendation of the Engineering Department for the following, that the request for proposals for engineering services, wastewater treatment plant headworks and UV system upgrades be awarded to CBLC Limited for an estimated cost of a hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents, HST included, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents, eight cents net HST, which includes a full mandatory design, pricing items one to six, with overall budget amount estimated to be three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents funded from wastewater reserves. And that council award the construction services items seven and eight at an estimated cost of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents, HST included, thirty-three thousand, seventy-seven dollars and forty-three cents net HST be awarded in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, contingent on council approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital budget for the construction and engineering construction services.
All right, thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, question? Was there an item nine, ten in this?
No, I think that was an error in the original report.
Okay, okay, cool, just make sure. I, the thing that shocked me was with all the cost overruns and budgets coming in way over, just to have one that came a little bit closer to the budget was, I mean, it's still over, but it's, like, we just awarded one the other day that was, like, way over, so I don't know if this is a sign of things to come, but I'm just happy it's starting to narrow a little bit, because it's been painful for every municipality across the country, I think. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you so much. Item eleven point two, Appointment of Building Inspector, Fire Inspector, and Dangerous, Dangerous and Unsightly Premises Administrator, so... So, this is, we have an agreement with Municipal District of Lunenburg, and they have a new person in, additional person in this role to increase the level of service, and so we have to appoint, officially appoint, people in these roles. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Council McDonald?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, appoint Amanda Estherbrooks as Building Official, Fire Inspector, and Dangerous and Unsightly Premises Administrator under Section 5-2 of the Nova Scotia Building Code Act, Section 19.1B of the Nova Scotia Fire Safety Act, and Section 2-1 of the Town's Policy Number 82, Dangerous and Unsightly Premises. Respectfully, as per the terms of the agreement between the Town of Bridgewater and the Municipality of the District of Lunenburg dated June 18th, 2019.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 11.3, Condition Review Centennial Trail Bridge. I see Mr. Davidson coming down. We used to talk about this when you were on Parks and Rec all the time.
I miss those days sometimes. So, thank you for the introduction, just following up. This item really was a project that was started in the 2021, 22 budgets, sorry, 21, 2021 budget, and finished at the very end of it, so that we never took the report to council or the summary of the findings. So, really, the objective of the assessment was to make sure that the bridge is safe for its intended use, and in doing, to do that, we had a contract to a third priority to inspect the bridge, to make sure that all is well, and then report those findings to council and incorporate them in the budget. So, it was last fall, almost a year ago, that that bridge was assessed, on October 21st, and Mitchell Moore Engineering Company was the company to inspect the bridge. They did so in accordance with the Canadian Highway Bridge Design Code and the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual. And the, any areas that they could not be within arm's reach or very close to, they used a drone for those, one, those areas that were challenging. The observations they found that day served as the foundation for the report that I will summarize some of the highlights. So, working sort of around, from the bottom up, we'll say, the masonry piers did show severe mortar loss. I'm pretty sure that those that walked the bridge, all of you do, you'll see that there is mortar missing and there's vegetation growing out. There is no evidence of instability, however, it is recommended to keep monitoring those piers. The abutments, where the bridge is on either side of the river, were noted in good condition, but the bearings were exhibiting signs of corrosion, and there was localized mortar loss or cracking within the wing walls on either side. The bridge approaches, which is the trailway to, as it approached from the trail, were shown to be in good condition. However, they do note that they do get wore down quite frequently with all the travelers, so we do recognize that we have to maintain those periodically throughout the year, so there's less, reduce the tripping hazards. In terms of the embankments on either side, fairly steep, associated with the river, so they are susceptible to erosion, but none was really observed. They did point out to make sure we do inspect those regularly and address any erosion that we do see. The existing bridge superstructure was in generally, generally good to fair condition. They did note that there were some isolated areas of medium to, or light to medium erosion. The deck top, which was recently replaced in my time here in the last three years, in 2020, was in great condition, but they did note there was a few timber so, sorry, timber, crease of timber, sorry, that needed replacement, approximately 20 of them. They did state overall, the structure from top to bottom was in good condition. However, it does need periodic inspection, and in terms of its intended load, certainly it was a rail bridge before, so with the reduced live loads on it with cyclists, the maintenance vehicles certainly has enough reserve capacity for its intended use. Again, they repeated it needs to be regularly monitored, both by staff themselves, if there was any significant weather events, whether it be flooding or storms, as well as continuing the third-party inspections. A spreadsheet was attached, I recognize that it was fairly large, but it was broken down by year over 10 years. So, the immediate is in the first one to two years, they covered things like timber ties, the drain, some of them modify, modify some of the drains, some battlers, or the underwater inspection of the other piers where the water is the deepest in the channel, and general maintenance through the short term, which was next three to five years, and then long term, where you'll see us expend, or suggested to expend substantial money, especially on the piers and access to them. So, with that being said, staff are recommending to Town Council to refer this report and associated budget indications to the 23, 24 budget deliberations. Thank you.
Thanks for that detail in there, Matt. Looking ahead, that there's a couple of years where there's big-ticket items, and recognizing the importance of this as part of the Centennial Trail and the, you know, the network of trails around the province, should we be making sure we get some grant applications in? I would think that the province would be very much interested in making sure that this remains accessible and in tip-top condition. So, I know that, you know, in 23, 24, you have a budget of 21, $22,035,72, but then we start getting into, you know, $363,000. I'm wondering if it makes more sense to, maybe not next year or the year after, but then if we can condense those, go to an RFP, get a grant and go to an RFP and have the work done. It's not a question you have to answer today, but I'm just wondering if that's something that we should be looking at.
Certainly, buying in volume is always a good thing when it comes to any repairs that we're looking at, in the limited experience in other municipalities that have challenges with these large bridges. Certainly, in my experience, if we don't get to it, it could lead to the loss of the bridge, which is what we don't want. So, certainly, we should be looking at trying to schedule things appropriately based on the budget. But, yeah, trying to condense it. As I broke this out, I tried to recognize that some of those investments are quite large, so spreading them over one or two years in all realistic, I probably see that the construction will happen over one or two years by the time you tender us, and then you do maybe one pillar or one pier one year, another couple, like, starting right away, so I can see some of these projects going over a couple of years or multi-year anyways.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on that? This is to refer the condition review, you know, for the budget deliberations and the recommendations of budget deliberations. So, we'll come back at budget time. If there's no other questions now, you can always talk to, talk to Matt. In the meantime, is someone prepared to make a motion, Council Fugier?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Your Worship. I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the condition review of the Centennial Trail Bridge and recommend repairs as contained in Document 22-170 to the 2023-24 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Caldwell, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 11.4, Appointment to Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners. It's always good to see such strong citizen applicants, and I hear there were a number of applicants for this. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Fugier, please, thank you.
Yes, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Police Commission and appoint Diane Spencer to the Bridgewater Police Commission for a three-year term ending November 2025.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Conklin, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to 11.5, I see the chief's here, alternate emergency purchase for a police vehicle. Chief?
Thank You, Worship of the Council. I'm here tonight seeking pre-approval for an unbudgeted capital expense to replace one of our marked patrol vehicles that had a significant mechanical malfunction approximately two weeks ago. So, we're seeking up to a maximum of $62,000, and also approval to use alternative procurement to try and locate or preorder a vehicle. Our last one that was approved in the RFP was ordered in April and we still hadn't received it, so we're into six months already looking for a vehicle. So, right now, we are down one vehicle. If one of our older ones that were due to be replaced this year has a significant mechanical malfunction, we'll be down to two vehicles. My understanding is the new vehicle is currently at the auto port waiting to be delivered out here and then be outfitted, so hopefully, within a month, we'll have one back on the road. It's more of a precaution to see if we can find something to replace our older car that was due to be replaced this year, or preorder one so we can get one as soon as possible, I guess.
Questions? I feel like we're going to be in this state for a while where there's just a long lead time for...
Yeah, we are, so three of our vehicles have significant amount of kilometers after, after we deferred one vehicle a number of years ago, and now we're playing catch-up, so three of our vehicles are in excess of $180,000, right around $180,000. Two of our older SUVs, one which the transmission went. It's just not, that one will be replaced with the new one coming rather than the, our old white car that's still dr buvical, so we're trying to suffer that through until we can find, find a replacement.
Questions, Council Caldwell?
Although you'd be using alternative procurement, would you check local dealerships first?
Yeah, some of that, that's what we'll have to go through a number of dealerships to see what they have for police vehicles. My understanding, locally, there is none currently. They are checking inventory, we did reach out prior to the report to have an idea. Pricing is up a little bit, based it off what we paid for 2,000, or last year's RFP, or this year's RFP. So, I think it was, we picked $3,000 net HST for us, a little over that, so that's why the cost has gone up. Part of our 10-year plan, we had it budgeted at 57, but since COVID, all vehicle costs have significantly increased. I don't have good news like a moderate.
No. And Council Conklin?
Yeah, so have we considered maybe EV?
Yeah, so at the last commission meeting, we just started the capital budget process. We were due to replace both, both of the SUVs next year, that was part of our discussion. It's definitely a viable option, I just don't, we haven't, I haven't, on the background, yet to find out what it's going to cost for the commission, or what's up there. There's definitely some new vehicles on the market that we may be able to take advantage of.
Yeah, there's more and more, we just, we emailed today, there's a couple of new, this is like a new, GM has a new option now coming that's going to be police spec, so on top of the ones that are already out, there's more coming, so...
Yeah, and Ford has a couple, they have the Mach 3, and they actually have the Lightning trucks, all compatible now with police.
Any other questions, Council Thorburn?
Yes, you do have a 10-year capital plan for replacement of police vehicles?
Yes.
And we did, apparently, you took a vehicle out, and that really affects your capital plan.
Yeah, our marked gas vehicles are currently, we try to rotate every three years, and it seems to be the sweet spot, per se, and once we go that fourth year, I mean, it's possible, unfortunately, the last two times when we've deferred, we had transmission problems. I think the last time you were on the commission, and we came right on the, on the Fall Conference when the transmission went in one of our other vehicles, so that was a number of years ago.
But you do have a 10-year plan.
We do have a 10-year replacement.
Any other questions? Some, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, please, thank you. The Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve an unbudgeted capital expenditure for one marked police patrol vehicle up to a maximum of $62,000, with source of funding to be determined closer to fiscal year-end. And two, that Council for the Town of Bridgewater authorize the procurement of a marked police patrol vehicle through alternative procurement as provided for under Section 18F of the Town's Purchasing and Tender Policy, Policy 79. I didn't know if I should do that again, I took a chance.
It works. You took a chance, that's all right.
I'll second them both.
Seconded by Council Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question?
Question, may call, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
While you're there, to put you totally on the spot, are current EV police cars working well as expected?
It is, I know that the Chair has asked me for some information. I can tell you that it has, we haven't been driving it as regularly due to staffing shortages. It's been used by our SSRO the last three weeks, and it's definitely cost-effective compared to the current gas one he drives, which is a four-cylinder car, it's actually more efficient than that. We've had no issues to date with it. I can tell you, on average, we run a 12 and an eight-hour shift back-to-back and still have enough power before we plug it in on the journey for the next day. So, we're burning about 35% for a 12-hour shift, that's with all the emergency equipment, radar, lights, et cetera. So, April 1st, or actually, October 31st, our full-time traffic position will commence, and you will see it on the road Monday to Friday all day long, not idling, but conducting radar and traffic enforcement.
That's great.
So, it is working out better than what I expected or what we expected. The results have definitely been significant.
I know when the school liaison officer had it at the show and shine at the, at the school, it was a hit.
Yeah, and it's been to a couple of fire departments, last one, and I think the exhibition parade, and I think we had a request for Christmas on La Havre, for the Christmas on La Havre, to bring this here, so we will make that happen.
I talked to a parent that, just because, as an aside, I talked to a parent whose, whose child, let's say, was not someone who would normally walk up to a police officer and strike up a conversation. This child is a car enthusiast, and so the car literally broke the ice, and this, this young person had a long conversation with her school liaison officer, and this parent just could not, almost in tears, could not believe that that interaction would have ever taken place, because for her child to do that was a big, a big step out of their comfort zone, and so it, it really, it demonstrates what, what the tools we have, including, you know, some people might say, "Oh, it's just a police car, it's just an EV," but in this case, it really did something beyond that, so...
Yeah, it's the icebreaker, yeah. We've had a number of agencies all the way across Canada reach out to us, you know, our neighbors here, and as well as New Brunswick are definitely interested. Matter of fact, the Deputy Chief of the MLC, she just called last week and speaking, they're already, it's the way of the future. Let's be real, right? It is, and it's only going to get better as we do.
Oh, great, looking forward to seeing it full-time. All right. Yes, Council Thorburn?
12-hour shift and 8-hour shift, how long does it take to actually recharge 100%? It works back-to-back, sure.
Three, three, and three, three and a half hours, four hours.
That's awesome.
We're charging to 90%, we don't, the order recommendations are not to charge to 100%, so we're charging at 90%. Like I say, we're burning anywhere from 32 to 35% throughout the day. You know, that's what the emergency equipment running, it stopped in an accident for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, and even the parade, I think we burned 7% or 12%, sorry, just the parade, drove the entire parade, sat there for two hours with the lights, emergency equipment going, and it was only lost just a...
We'll probably see it again on November 11th and for the Legion Parade, November 11th.
Have to book it, you know, online booking for it.
We'll take care of it.
All right, thank you, Chief. 11.6, we have recommendation of the MGSB Chief Operating Officer, assignment of operating agreement to Scotia Recycling Limited. Is someone prepared to make a motion for that one, Council Conklin?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater assign its rights and obligations to pursuant to the December 7th, 2012 operating agreement with Scotia Recycling Limited to the Municipal Joint Services Board.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Fugier. I'm assuming all our municipal neighbors that are involved in the MGSB would be doing the same, and, yeah. Okay, I don't know if any of the board members have any other comments to add on that. It's pretty straightforward, okay? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. And we're down to 11.7, Succession Plan for Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator.
Yes, so this evening, we wanted to talk about succession planning at the wastewater treatment plant. As some of you may be aware, we have four certified operators at the treatment plant currently, and in order to be at the treatment plant operating, they not only have to be experienced, but they also have to be certified at the level of the treatment plant or higher. Recently, we were advised that one of our long service employees... Recently, we were advised that one of our long service employees, career of 40 years at the treatment plant, will be retiring in the next couple of months, or that's his hope. And we've also lost a second operator within the last couple of weeks that took an alternate career path. So we do have a recruitment plate, a recruitment process underway, but in order to transition this gap, we are looking to allow ourselves a little time to get the vacancy filled for that qualified person and give them a little crossover time with this experienced operator. If we were to do this, it would be a very short-term filling of two positions at the same time. With the vacancy we currently have, it will be minimal, minimal impact to our overall salary budget. We're expecting it would potentially look to be about a $15,000 overage. And if it did go a little longer than expected, the annual salary of that individual would be $58,000 per year. So we are looking to get that assistance as soon as possible so that we can use our active process in order to fill those vacancies.
Okay. Any questions or comments or that? Makes sense, quite prudent. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Cocklin?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the establishment of a wastewater operator position as an addition to the existing wastewater operator complement as part of a succession plan and authorize the over-budget expenditure in salaries for the wastewater operators as may be required during the succession plan period.
Perfect, thank you. Seconded by Councilor Caldwell. Further debate? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. And we're down to energy management information system progress to date.
I have with me Suman Kalyan, who is our advisor with Axiom Labs. Axiom Labs, I don't remember. I do have a presentation. I apologize that it was late. A few things sort of happened to cause that. But it's really great to be here providing an update on the Energize Bridgewater project, but focused on our energy management information system component. So that's the, I apologize, I overlooked the fact that we have an acronym in our title, but that's the ENS. So you received a report that accompanied this that gave you a little bit, a little bit of an update around the other components to the Energize Bridgewater project. So the coordinated access system, which is the, one of the doorways through which we feel and understand clients of the Energize Bridgewater program would walk in, they're experiencing energy poverty, and they may also have other challenges that they are experiencing. And so they're having this coordinated way of accessing various community services. So that was launched and has been operational since the spring. You met Ryan this evening, so we engaged with Efficiency One in a contract to deliver the housing energy management of the retrofit component to the Energize system. So that is nearing launch also, which is very exciting. And also our investment system component, so the $5 million of PACE funding or loan that we received from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in addition to, we are doing a study, we have the results, almost of an assessment of what opportunities there may be for private investment into energy efficiency in our community. So that will be coming forward to council in the near future. So this update is really focused on the energy management information system component. And also I have Miles here with me as well. And I realize that. Okay, I'm not doing this right. My screen is showing something different, so I'm a little confused as to where I'm at. Can I do something? Pardon me for a minute while I have a technical, it's showing up on the screen. And Miles is here, he's our outside energy manager, but I don't know how I'm moving it forward and backward. I've had a very serious case of the gremlins on my computer today, so it's just ongoing. So Miles, are you able to drive my presentation?
I think so.
Okay.
Did that work?
Yeah, you're moving the cursor. Or someone's moving the cursor.
I just saved the presenter. Did that work?
I don't know. Learning something new every day.
Yeah, it's moving stuff.
I don't believe I'm moving anything. Okay, so Patrick will assist. Can you go back? Go back another one? Right, okay, no, this is where we're at. Okay, go to the second slide. I apologize, wow. Okay, so I just wanted to give a refresher on what is the Energy Management Information System. So really, it's referring to a broad set of tools that monitor, analyze, and control building energy use and system performance. So what does that even mean? Really, we're going to give you some schematics, but it's about the using sensors and, and information and analytics to be able to understand how the systems within your home are operating from an energy efficiency perspective and getting that information to the end user. There's a lot that happens on the in-between. I'm not the expert, that's why Suman and Miles are here, but ultimately, the objectives of the system are to measure and verify the retrofit savings and additional opportunities that may arise, so to identify and recommend additional energy savings, so drive further energy efficiency by having some information. So really enabling residents to make those data-informed decisions about their energy use. So the measurement verification is really those tools for the energy managers and identifying and recommending those, those systems are having, you know, getting data and making decisions about it. Those are the controls for the tenants or the homeowners. So that control isn't about, you know, being able to turn things on and off through your phone. It's about having that data that you can control what you're doing because you have more information. So, next slide please. So just a quick summary of some of the work to date. It's been a little bit in fits and starts because we lost some in-house expertise, but we spent the first while really trying to work on our concept because it doesn't exist anywhere. That's the big thing. For a community level and community scale deployment, Energy Management Information Systems don't exist. So we worked on the concept. And then we brought on Axiom Labs and hired a data science analyst intern, and then things really got going. We entered into a collaborative research partnership with the community college. We continued the advisory services and we actually like got so close in our understanding of what we wanted and understood we needed the Energy Management Information System to do that we tried to prove the concept in a lab environment. So that was pretty exciting. Next slide. So all the work we did to figure out the overall design, this is sort of the high level, and I don't expect you to understand any of these, but I'll walk through. The big things are the green boxes with the titles. We've got device management on the far left-hand side of the screen, so that's the sensors in the homes measuring things such as temperature, energy use, et cetera. And then it, that information goes to a communication gateway, so that's the number two. And then into the big box down at the bottom is the data collection. And all those little pieces that go through it, that's the data management, well, there's a layer of data management, privacy and security over top of it. But those are the, as I understand it, and Miles might, he would have a different way to explain it, but those are all the different pieces, the sensors, information that we're bringing in, putting it into a structure that then we can analyze and report so that we can make sense of that data. And ultimately, we'll have a customer portal at the end. So that is the architecture at the high level. So there's hardware, the sensors and communication. There's the data architecture, and then there's the front-end software that will enable people to interact with it. So the proof of concept piece that we've been working to date is the hardware, really understanding better the specifics of how it needs to be set up. And we still need to determine that sort of a bit more on the architecture, privacy, security components, as well as the software end. So we will, next slide please. So the partnership that we had for the, this is just a slide to represent the various partners that we had in the proof of concept, and we want to move into sort of that next stage, continuing with these partnerships in various capacities. But in talking with the lead, Wayne, Dr. Wayne Roscoe, the lead researcher from the community college, he asked me to share this. So this is a direct quote from Wayne, that the collaboration with the Town of Bridgewater is a remarkable success from my perspective as a leader of the Nova Scotia Community College Applied Energy Research Lab. Together with the Energize Bridgewater team and the project consultants, we've been able to prove the concept of an Energy Management Information System for homes in the community. The work on this has gone farther and faster than we expected. We're excited to continue to work together on the next step to develop and test this So the results from this proof of concept process that we went through, like what does it really mean for us? It really means that we have a tangible solution for the Energy Management Information System. All the other times we've come to you, it's still remained conceptual. Now it's really feeling tangible. We have working code, we have design requirements, and we have a system that is partially built from the proof of concept. So even if we don't procure, you know, now that we have basically the specs for it, we could go out and say, somebody build us this. Except, we also learned that there isn't one single vendor who could do everything for us, so that's one of our learnings. We collected data with 11 sensors that were done, so basically we simulated two separate homes, put sensors in the homes. They weren't in real homes, it was a simulation. We tested two different data platforms. There's not many, and I won't be the right, use the right lingo, but there's not many cloud platforms that we could use, but we tested two. But based on requirements for maintaining our data in Canada and things like that, we were able to settle on the one that will work best for all of our various requirements. We looked at how data moves, so the data pipeline. We collected sample data, moved it through, and put it into, I learned lots of new terms, like a data warehouse that was on the Azure server. And we installed and configured those sensors so that they can communicate. And we needed to create, just a note on the communication platform, recognizing that we're trying to help people in energy poverty, we needed something that didn't rely on Wi-Fi. And that is why we chose the communications architecture that we did, because it had to be reliable regardless of whether you could afford to have internet or not. So that was a real test of the system. And then we looked at automation and automating how the data flows, and that's really quite beyond me. So the part that gets me a little bit more excited, next slide, is that we also tested some of the analytics and dashboards and can we get it on a phone? Can we get it on a screen? Can we begin to make the data make sense? And so what type of analysis software could there be? So these are samples of real dashboards and a consumer mobile dashboard that were generated during the proof of concept. They're not made pretty, they're not meant for normal people like myself or yourselves to really understand what it was. Can we do this? Can this start to make sense? And, you know, we can, we can then customize it for how we need the end users to have it. So this was using Power BI, which is a Microsoft-based visual analytics tool. And so this type of software can be used by energy managers to then generate reports to provide information to customers and end users of the system. And in fact, the Efficiency One energy managers have been using the specific software for doing this type of work for some time now and are developing a good and deep, deep experience in that. Next slide. So what have we learned through this past process on what we're calling the lab POC or the laboratory proof of concept? So that the technology, like last year, we didn't know what we wanted to procure, but we had a very detailed document trying to figure it all out. Now we know, after a lot of research, after this proof of concept, we know the technology and the data architecture of what works and what doesn't. So that's feeling really good. So we've really mitigated some of those risks that we had of just going out to the broad globe saying, hey, we have this great idea. Now we can say, hey, we have this great idea and we need it to do X, Y, Z. And we tested these two different concepts of how the communication network would be set up, as well as understanding how that data goes from, from the sensors into the analytics and out. So we have an understanding of what skills we need, what type of people, what type of skills we need to be able to build this. And we understand better about the, how we will define the precise, the more precision we have and what type of software requirements we need, the better we will, better outcome we will have in any type of procurement situation. And what we do know is that there's a wide range of procurement options open to us now. And we know that we couldn't find a single solution in industry. So now we're at the point of looking at how do we build this? And what do we need? And determining that pathway is, is really the next step. And we have a much better understanding of the risk, so. Moving on to the next slide. So where do we go from here? So the, from a product development, you know, industry standard product development process, the next step will be to create a minimum viable product based on the foundation we created through the proof of concept. So what does that even mean? It means creating the next version that's both how the Energy Management Information System needs to function and how people can understand what its function is. So it's really adding in the people part of the process, as well as some of that software interaction part of the process. So it would really end up, a minimum viable product would be that draft version, the beta version of the ENS, where non-technical users could start to use it on a trial basis. We can't have software engineers running ENS because normal laypeople who don't understand software engineering won't understand at all. That's just basically a conversation that Suman and I had earlier today. Go to the next slide. So refining, just going back to the, the functions of the ENS at that high level, that map that I showed you earlier, the next step are to refine, basically numbers one, two, three, four, five, we've been experimenting with in the proof of concept. So we need to refine those. And we need, and then we need to add that basic consumer experience, so that's number six, that we haven't really tested yet at all. So we need the ability for non-technical users to add new users into the system. And that's everything from the device management and communications. We need basic security measures in place for the data, protecting people's privacy, protecting the data, making sure that that is really secure. We need, we need to host this in a real-life environment to test all the bugs, et cetera. We need to continue and test, refine the data collection in that real-world environment also, because we know we'll experience failures. How do we deal with it? Adding that security, as I've already said, refining the analytics and reporting, and developing a customer portal. So, is this the last one? So this is where we are. We've checked out number one, we did the proof of concept. We're going to move into the minimum viable product components, we get to that draft, that prototype to test out and to field trials, and then into a product launch, launch rather. We have multiple procurement pathways to explore, from bringing in a variety of vendors to packaging up certain components of that overall concept into pieces that we would then put out procurement options for. So when we have those, those pathways, if it, if it really varies from, we have varied from our initial thought that we would just find one person to do it all for us. We know that's not happening, so now we'll be bringing it back in different pieces. It's really about mixing the core team and the partnerships that we've built, leveraging those and bringing in through, through various procurement pathways, those skills and resources that we need. That, I guess the last thing is just, this is a pretty unique opportunity because we have proven that it doesn't exist anywhere. Suman can answer any questions that you have around that. We're also hearing from all of our partners that it's really industry-leading and it's not just about the technical success, if it shows that retrofits work, right? Like that, that measurement verification, driving those, those energy savings through the retrofits, being able to look at this and share that information, you know, can really encourage investment in other communities in Canada and beyond, continue to encourage investment in retrofits and what it will give to communities, show investors, show government. So it's really exciting that we're at the stage where it does feel tangible, it does feel like it has positive outcomes, and all of the partners from Efficiency One to, you know, the community college are really excited. know, the Community College are really excited about the opportunities that it brings, so.
Great, thank you.
That's where we're at.
That's a great update. Questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Jessica, it's certainly really exciting, I guess I could come with questions. So how do the sensors connect to the cloud server without Wi-Fi?
I can answer.
Perfect.
I cannot answer.
So these sensors, as Jessica was pointing out, are not over Wi-Fi network. So the kind of communication standard selected for the POC is something called low-powered wide-area network. So think of it like Wi-Fi, but it can communicate over five to 10 kilometers kind of distance. So the data from the sensors, over LPVAN, called LoRaVAN, in other words, is sent to this gateway. So the devices actually connect wirelessly to the gateway. So that half of communication is over wireless. Now from the wireless gateway, which is installed kind of on top of a radio tower, the data from there gets to the cloud through cellular communication, which is a port. So we have one of those tablets or cell cards in that gateway, and that's how the data gets to the cloud.
So I'm confused, I guess, about where, where the WAN resides? Where does the wide-area network reside to communicate with the sensors?
It's something that's installed, it's part of the project, so we need a wireless gateway to install.
Okay, okay, okay. And I guess one other question, or more of a concern, I guess. So when you're talking about procurement, you're obviously talking about software development, that component of it? Yeah. And there's, you have no defined budget for that? Which is really scary.
Yes, we do have some defined budget for it.
Okay.
Very clearly, because we only have a certain amount of budget for the project.
Okay.
And we do have budgets set aside for that.
Okay.
In the project budget.
How much is that?
But it's always been our best guess, and I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I can get that information to you. It's always been our best guess, because this has always been a very, which is, which is a very challenging spot to be in. I agree.
And, sorry, one more now that I think about. So you'll have, you mentioned multiple firms developing this software piece, or, sorry, I'm confused by, you said multiple groups would help you develop this, or put it together?
Right, we've been, and I'll let Suman talk about it, because we haven't landed on the firm pathway, and I do have a slide that might be, I've stuck it in the back. I'll just speak to it at this point. So from the recommendations, from the work that's been done, you know, there's complete outsourcing, which would require, I think you said, one, like two vendors at least?
Yeah, at least two to three vendors.
And then there's sort of the, the partial, there's, there's a variety of then other opportunities, we've been brainstorming the different ways, where continuing to partner with Efficiency, continuing to partner with the Community College, they're very eager to, and leveraging those resources, that we would then look at sort of bringing in sort of partial outsourcing, I guess is what it would be. So we'd have our established partners, and there are some things that would be easier to package up. So if we did go back a couple slides, that, sorry, that one. Okay, so there are some elements that would be, as I understand it, and I'll let Suman jump in to complete this thought, but there are some elements of this that would be easier to package than others. So we could sort of put RFP out for analytics and reporting and consumer portal component versus, and then maybe resource up, I guess there's companies, didn't talk about this today, do you want to just turn this away?
Yeah, so I think broadly, if you see the kind of skills that are needed, number of vendors, broadly the kind of skills are, you know, setting up all of this communication gateways, hardware sensors, one kind of skill. There's some companies who have it. There is other kind of skill, which is building data, data management layers, working on the cloud, setting up that sort of thing. It's the second line of the skill. Third is having that energy management experience, able to build dashboards, able to build friendly consumer portals, so that people can consume analytics in a very friendly manner, again it's a great skill. It's hard to find out who you want.
Right.
So that's, that's really what you're dealing with.
When we're looking at essentially inventing something, like I look at this as an opportunity to not lose track of it, because it could become, like, if this is a success, which we anticipate is going to be a success, it's going to be needed potentially all over the world. So I look at, so Deputy Mayor and I were in the FCM, and City of Edmonton, right, that owns its own company, that's, that, I mean, it's billions of dollars of revenue for them from all the services. They'll run somebody's wastewater treatment plant, they'll run somebody's natural gas refinery. But I look at that as, that's their legacy of a secondary source of income to help their taxpayers or their project. And, and so I'm looking at this, saying, if we're, if we're going to build something that, that everyone will eventually hopefully need, is this something that we are going to, like, retain control and ownership of so that we can license it or sell it, or something?
Yeah, it's a great thought. You know, what I would do is, I would really convert this into sort of intellectual property while we build this, own all the intellectual property, that gives you the opportunity to now consult with other municipalities across Canada and have the services as well in the future. I think there is, it opens up a revenue opportunity for sure. I think secondly, another very future, you know, futuristic way of looking at it is, see, what we've built here, it's not just energy management, you could potentially drive any smart, smart city use case you want, in hookup sensors, delivery, parking lots, you know, all sorts of applications for this, you know, which is riding on the same infrastructure.
Right.
There's a lot of very exciting opportunities in this board.
That's great. I just see, anything that can generate income can offset some of the costs of the project, which is going to reduce energy poverty, go put in affordable houses, something, whatever. Does that lead you to a follow-up?
It does. So do we have an intellectual agreement in place now between the partners? Because if not, we definitely should.
We do.
Okay.
But we need to look at it as we move forward.
What's a reasonable timeline to have the system operational?
Look, I can answer that too. So I think we accomplished a lot building the foundation in POC. From my estimate, let's say we had all the resources, technical resources that are necessary to build this, take it to the MVP stage, we probably have ten weeks, or ten weeks of it. After ten weeks, when you get the system operational, the next logical steps are to hook it up in a few homes, do kind of a field trials, resolve all the bugs, see what we may, we may have missed. I would say another 10 to 12 weeks of field testing, after that we are ready for a full-scale launch. I would say about 20, 28 weeks.
Just a reminder, that's once the resources are in place.
Yeah, disclaimer.
Big disclaimer.
Yeah, we're not writing dates down and, and.
Please don't.
Sanders, but we're not.
Could we patent some of that stuff?
Yes.
Once you develop it to a certain, are the people paid to get that?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I think that's important.
Hey, got us all excited. This is great. Agreed up to any other questions? All right. Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great. Down to 11.9, strategic priorities update in quarterly reports, and I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, who is playing the role of CIO tonight.
Yes, so I'm going to go quickly through the report. So everybody should have a copy of the report, and I'm going to go through some of the things that were updated for Q2. At the, following the strategic priorities portion, you also have access to a report on accessibility, as well as the department reports, which I'm not going to go through in detail. Most of the things are things that have been to council, I have to say, this fall. So the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaws, both for properties in the exit 12A area, as well as under the affordable housing, so both of those councils seen in September and October for changes that have been approved. On the branding and marketing strategy side, Greg's been here in September as well, outlining the, the strategy, focus sectors, and things like that with respect to marketing. On the Energize Bridgewater front, Jessica was just here with an update on the EMIS project, which was great. As well, council recently saw the PACE funding agreement. The town has signed their portion of it, however, both department, or I guess the Department of Municipal Affairs, NFCM, and MFC, all are yet to sign, but they have processes they have to go through once the minister approves and so on. So that one's not completely signed and done, however, our part of that is done to date, and hopefully in the next month or so, we'll actually get some money in the door for that. As well, the HEMs contract with E1 is also been discussed, and I, I think, in one of the last meetings. As far as asset management, we have awarded an RFP to Eagle Municipal, who has been doing some asset management training with both council and staff, with both of us kind of midway through that as well. The accessibility plan, I'm not going to go through, but right after the strategic priorities is a report from our accessibility coordinator on where we stand, and that accessibility coordinator is working for the group of municipalities, so it's kind of a, a report that covers everyone's process to date. Under investment attraction strategy, again, Greg's target sector analysis was provided. The transit feasibility study, an RFP was, was started and awarded to do some work on community engagement and a needs assessment as a phase-one look at the transit feasibility and what the community needs. So that's underway. Downtown redevelopment, the parking study report is still in draft, and I believe, hopefully will be finalized in the, in the future, but that's in process and with engineering to be reviewed right now, so that's underway. And the council size review, public engagement has been in process during Q2, and I'm not going to steal Patrick's thunder, as I believe he's reporting back to council on that a little bit later. As far as kind of some of the other specific department things, the audit for 2122 was completed and approved by council at the end of September, and I think that covers all of the things that were Q2 changes, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions on the whole report.
Any questions for Mrs. Hopkins? We've come a long way, a long, long way since we started, maybe four.
Yeah, I love seeing things done, completed, completed, completed. Yeah. Councilor's right, we had many, many a time where those completed boxes, we were just weren't able to get to them, just, so hats off to staff, just working through these, so, great. If you have any questions that come up, you can reach out to CIO Crowder, she will be more than happy to update you in more detail. Down to 11.10, application to purchase land. So council reviewed this through negotiation process with potential purchaser. And so, what is the will of council? Councilor.
Looking for motion. I would move that council accept the combined offer of $95,534 for lots 101.4 and 65 Lynn Allen Drive, and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale, emitted buyback agreements for each property with Mr. Daniel Cook, President, 3262707, Nova Scotia Limited. Buyback agreement terms to require consentment of construction on lot 101.4 within 12 months from the closing date and completion within 12 months of the commencement of construction, term four. Lot 65 to require commencement of construction within 24 months, date of closing date, and completion within 12 months of commencement of construction.
Have a second, or? Councilor Caldwell, any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Disposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to business arising, unfinished business, towns, energy management plan and contract with Efficiency One for onsite energy management services.
Matt is also here, so he can answer any questions. But as you would have seen in the report, it's for information purposes, we have been in an agreement and a contract with Efficiency One for onsite energy manager services since 2018. And since that time, the OEM, that's Miles, he has split his time between the town's energy management activities and the development of Energize Bridgewater, the Energy Poverty Reduction Program. So the energy management plan, he developed the one that we're currently in, and has been working closely with the engineering department to implement that plan. And with Energize Bridgewater, he has been, you know, working very closely as our technical lead, providing advice and guidance on energy efficiency. The contract ended last week, and when we, when we met with the steering committee to discuss sort of renewal for a further two years, they said that they were changing the program. And so, so really, what I was unaware of until that moment is that outside of CBRM, Cape Breton Regional Municipality, or Halifax Regional Municipality, we were the only other municipality with an embedded energy manager working directly with us. They do have 17 energy managers or more in the program, but they're embedded in all sorts of organizations from school, school boards or regional centers for education, to other organizations, but not other municipalities. So they are creating a program that will support multiple smaller municipalities, and support multiple municipalities at the same time, so not embedding an energy manager in one municipality like Miles has been. I think the larger municipalities, they will stay, but the smaller ones like ourselves, they'll be roving between them. So that means that, that service will be available to us at no cost, to assist with our energy, the town's energy management facilities and, and energy management plan. So it doesn't really have an impact on the engineering budget for the energy management plan implementation from that side of things. It has an impact in terms of availability, how much of Miles' time or access or the energy manager who might be in that role, we might have, because that will depend on how many other municipalities that person may be supporting. What it does mean is a loss to the Energize Bridgewater project. Miles will no longer be available to support our project after Christmas. We did enter into a short-term renewal to pay, it's not funded by the province. The past four years, the province has paid 50% of the bill, so ultimately splitting the town's portion into 25% in the engineering department and 25% in Energize Bridgewater. So right now, as you saw, Miles was here tonight, supporting me with the last update. He's going to be, continue to be dedicated to Bridgewater until Christmas, till he takes his break at, at the holidays in December, and then he will transition into this new role. And he will still be available. I told him he's not truly allowed to go, that I want to be a millionaire, he's my lifeline. So he's, he's not fully gone from the project, but he's not dedicated to it anymore, so that is the change. The ability to pay 100% of his time, he's, it'll be broken out how much he's spending on energy management, the bulk of it is really on Energize Bridgewater. Because we are fully funded for our work, it doesn't have a budget impact to us at this time, so. Any questions?
Well, we've been very fortunate to, to have his time, but.
Yeah, we've been incredibly fortunate. If you have any questions on the status update, that was also included, as to where things are, yeah.
Any questions? Well, we know where to find you.
Yes, learning how to be an AI.
12.2 is council size review, and so I know Patrick is going to walk through this after a lengthy public process.
That's right, just making sure everything's ticking over there, as it should be your worship. Thank you. So for a refresher, for council and for background for the folks who might be watching at home tonight, in 2022, all municipalities in the province of Nova Scotia are required to conduct a study of the number of their elected councillors, and if relevant, polling districts within their municipality. This study is, per the MGA, takes place every eight years, and the review must be completed and presented to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. and presented to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board for consideration by the end of the calendar year. Now, the UARB provides guidance to municipalities in terms of what elements should be considered when conducting a municipal boundary review. In Bridgewater's case, because we don't have any polling districts, we've probably, you've heard me say, we call this the council size review, and that's what we're focused on here, is the number of elected representatives in Bridgewater. So the UARB's guide places an emphasis on public engagement, ensuring that members of the community are given the opportunity to express their views on the size of council, and whether a town should be divided up into wards where applicable. When rendering a decision on the size of town council, in addition to public input, council should also consider its own experience and viewpoint on the desired governance size and style, and the demands on elected official as a community grows or shrinks. Now, earlier this year, council gave direction to staff to proceed with plans for a comprehensive staff-led community engagement process. So that process began in earnest in July, ran through early September, and included, among other things, a survey that was made available online and in print form in the bridge, a dedicated period for the public to speak at two town council meetings in August and September. Invitations were issued to the public to provide written submissions or complete the online survey via advertisements with local media. We also hosted an open house at Desperse Museum in the evening of Tuesday, August 9. Now, the result of the town's public engagement on the future size of Bridgewater Town Council points strongly towards a community that is satisfied with its current level of elected representation. The online survey was by far and away the medium through which we most heard from the public. We had 67 submissions through the online survey. Of those submissions, 84% that completed the survey identified themselves as residents of the town of Bridgewater. And of the 67 submissions, a total of 83% of respondents said that the number of councillors in Bridgewater is, in their opinion, appropriate. 11% said that it was not appropriate number, and 6% answered that they did not know. Also stemming from that survey, we learned that a total of 79% of respondents said that they believe the number of councillors in Bridgewater should remain the same at six. 15% said they believe that there should be fewer councillors here in town, and 6% said they actually thought there should be more town councillors. As part of that online survey, the public was also given the opportunity to provide additional comments on why they feel the size of council should or should have changed, or any other comments related to this process. In total, 13 comments through the survey were submitted, and the themes varied from increasing the number of councillors to match the size of our growing community. There were a couple that expressed interest in dividing the community up into a ward system. There was one individual that referenced a permanent BIPOC representative on council, and several comments just generally supporting the current size of council as being appropriate. It's also worth noting that we did receive one handwritten submission, that's completed using the form that went out in the bridge in June, and that submission also indicated and expressed that they felt that the size of town council as it's currently constructed is appropriate. We did not have any members of the public speak at either of the council meetings in August or September when that opportunity was given, and unfortunately, I spent a long lonely night at Desperse Museum on August 9th, because we didn't have anyone show up for that open house either. So overall, the results of the public engagement around the size of Bridgewater Town Council for the 2022 municipal boundary review indicate that residents are largely supportive of the current size and representation afforded by having six at-large elected officials here in Bridgewater. It's worth noting that Bridgewater's representation, for council's information, is generally reflective of the same kind of elected representation in place in other towns of similar size through Nova Scotia. Cantville, Yarmouth, and Amherst each have political representation that is the same as Bridgewater's system, including a mayor and six at-large elected councillors. New Glasgow and Truro each have a mayor and six elected officials as well, with the note that their elected officials are divided up into three wards, with two councillors per ward. It's also worth noting that there was minimal interest expressed by the folks who responded to the survey here at Bridgewater in adopting a ward system during public engagement, both in 2022 and the prior public review that we did in 2014. The comments that we received were included as part of your package tonight in Appendix A, so they're there for you or the general public to review. But with our public engagement having been completed, and recognizing that we have to make application of the UARB by the end of the year, staff is recommending tonight the town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to make application to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board per sections 368 and 69 of the Municipal Government Act, to confirm the number of councillors in Bridgewater as six elected councillors, and that the outcome of the 2022 municipal boundary review in our community is that no change in elected representation is being sought.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to make application to the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board per sections 368 and 369 of the Municipal Government Act, to confirm the number of councillors in Bridgewater as six elected councillors, and that the outcome of 2022 municipal boundary review is that no change in elected representation in Bridgewater is sought.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin for the discussion. Question being called, others in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. I was going to go on a big speech about how I love that we don't have a ward system, because I find in a community our size, a ward system can lead to division of priorities and some competitiveness around, you know, I want my ward to get paved, and I want my ward to get paved, and when you sit around in a at-large system, we represent every single person, no matter where they live, and so I just find it makes us so, we gel so much better, especially when I look at some other municipalities across the country, I'm not picking one in general, just where they're trying to divvy up dollars, where it means people are having less. I'm happy for this to continue on. Our last item is appointment of council to committee, commissions, and boards. I'm sure that most of the public is aware that it's not just Monday nights that we're here. I would argue that probably the least amount of time in terms of your council hat that you put on is at a council meeting in the physical two hours we're here on the odd Monday, because councils, councillors each sit on anywhere from five to nine committees, that does not include the multiple subcommittees or ad hoc committees that they're tasked to be on. So in a moment, the public is going to hear the list of all the committees, and again, this is not even an exhaustive list, because it doesn't include any of those subcommittees that I know each of you are on at least one of, so. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn, I knew I could count on you.
No worries. Now, and I sit on a couple of provincial boards as well, yours.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the mayor, and that the following appointments to committees, commissions, and boards may be made for a term of November the 1st, 2022, to October the 31st, 2024, unless otherwise outlined in committee terms of reference or otherwise governing documents. Accessibility Committee, McDonald, Alden, McConklin. Audit Committee, all council members. Bridgewater Active Transportation, Caldwell. Bridgewater Area Chairs of Commerce, Fager. Bridgewater Any Race Committee, Mitchell. Candidate on La Havre, Caldwell, Thorburn. Priest on La Havre, Fager, Tanner. Civic Engagement, Ed Haug, all council members. Construction Engineering Squadron Advisory, Thorburn. Desperse Museum, Commission, Thorburn. Downtown Plan Advisory Committee, Caldwell, Fager. Energized Bridgewater, Mitchell. Advanced Lumber County, Conklin. Fray Department Liaison, Thorburn. Grant St. Organization, Conklin and Tanner. Heritage Advisory Committee, Fager and Thorburn. Lumber County Multi-Purpose Center Board, Caldwell, Mitchell, Tanner, Alden, McDonald. Municipal Joint Service Board, Conklin, Mitchell, Tanner, Alden, Thorburn. Parks, Recreation, and Culture Advisory, McDonald, Thorburn. Police Commission, Conklin, Fager, and Tanner. Public Service Commission, Conklin, McDonald, Tanner, Mitchell, and Tanner. Regional Sex and Emergency Maids, Regional Emergency Maids Organization, Mitchell and Thorburn. Region Six Inter-Municipal Advisory, Thorburn, Alden, Caldwell. School Advisory Committee, McDonald. Senior Safety Advisor, McDonald. Social Housing Action Coalition, Caldwell. Social Regional Library, Caldwell. Youth Engagement, Conklin, Fager, and Mitchell.
Thank you. Have a second, or please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, any objections to those? It's a long list. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Now, we have a, we have a motion that's just been at its time sensitive. I don't know, Deputy Mayor Tanner, if you want to just put that one on the floor, and maybe give us a little introduction on that one?
Yeah, so the recent Mayor's Wardens, Mayor's Wardens Deputy's CAO's meeting, there's some appointments to the Lumber County Accessibility Advisory Committee made by all the members of the, of that group, and so tonight, we'd like to make a motion that Council for the town of Bridgewater reappoint Louise Hopper to the Lumber County Accessibility Advisory Committee for a term expiring December 2023, to appoint Dylan Robar and Teresa Alexander-Arab, and to reappoint Peggy McCalle to the Lumber County Accessibility Advisory Committee for three-year terms.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, folks. We have an in-camera following this to deal with personnel matter, which is under Municipal Government Act, Section 222(c). Can I please have a motion to adjourn? Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Councilor Caldwell. We are adjourned. Thank you.